Yeah, it's like two bars.
Well, that's what 5G is supposed to be.
Is it?
Yeah, 5G is a little faster, but it doesn't travel that well.
Oh, well, there you go. Really? Doesn't 5G like give you like brain cancer or something or I? Right? We're live at the Montegoles City Council meeting. Uh, we're a couple of minutes away. We're about one minute away, so um, thanks for tuning in. It is the May Town Council meeting. Yep.
Excuse me. Hello, it's now six o'clock and we're going to have the Montegoles City Council meeting on May the twenty third, twenty twenty-two to order. And we're going to have prayer. Janet, would you please lead us in prayer? Everybody would please stand.
Oh God, just as we look into the mirror to see any soil spots on our face, so we let, so let us look to you in order to understand the things that we have done immense. We are like, we are like a reed shaken in the wind. We are expressing weak, we are expressly weak. Let us not to ourselves, but dwell in the hearts and guide us through the actions that do the right thing for town of Montegoles and its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray.
Will, Mary, would you please come and lead us in the prayer?
If you would, remove your headgear. Repeat after me. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a to the other which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Next, we'll do a roll call. Nate Wilson?
Here.
How we found?
Here.
Jessica Babbitt-Law?
Here.
Doreen Carmichael?
Here.
Let's sit up. We're all present. Okay. First, we have the approval of minutes. The beer board made it and the council meeting on April the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. We have any changes or any comments per those minutes?
I make motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I don't know.
Opposed? Okay, our police officer is not here yet. So fire department, we're going to start with you and then move our way down. And you have a report from the fire chief here.
So today for the month, we've run about twenty calls, a few structure fires, four different incidents on I-24. We had three mutual aid calls with Tracy and a mutual aid call for Powell. Just for kind of a run through. We've used about eighteen thousand gallons of water. Um, with public works with John and his crew, we kind of got a start date together to start on the fire hydrants for the panning for the town to get all those back up, you know, while they just got their flow test done. I believe John's ordered tank stuff for that, so that's underway. At the department, we've been doing house testing for the nineteen sixty-two NFPA standards. So fire hose has got about a thirty-year lifespan. And unfortunately, so far, we're about three hundred feet out of six hundred feet failing, so that's not looking good to start out. But anyway, I've gotten, I've gotten two bids to kind of replace it as we go. And they're attached to your packet there that I gave you. On the codes enforcement side, there's been four written complaints that I addressed this month. That's resolutions to be sent as well. There's five follow-ups to previous complaints that I revisited from last month and carried over. I've issued a compliance letter, answered a few questions over the phone, you know, phone inquiries that's been calling me. Several small, just random signs have been pulled throughout the town. That's about all that's been happening in my neck.
Now, we have a couple of signs that you're going to look with Earl to get the cost down. It's going to be placed for businesses. We can put some cost today and you said give us this and that. Council, do you have any other questions for the codes enforcement?
I've also attached several guys that's asking about the ISO schedule. That's in the back of the package if you guys want to. Just want to run through it on spare time. What I've got highlighted in yellow is what we have on Montegoles truck. I have six hundred costs of word of four ninety-two and we're working our way at it, so we're making ground with it.
We actually had a hundred and six thousand had been donated to the fire truck, which that funds were transferred to capital funds. But we did got, we got a ten thousand dollar check today from an individual on the fire truck, which puts the cost of that probably around thirty-four thousand, I'm thinking now, because it's one fifty, one forty-nine. So all the money on the truck, that came in today as one person, and we made a donation for ten thousand dollars.
Very appreciated.
Didn't happen until later. And one of the things I want to clarify, Minnie talked about it today when we were talking about hydrants.
Yes.
Instead of paying, I think at one time it was five thousand dollars to the fire department to contract it out. And then there was a seven, was it seven or nine thousand dollar savings that we did with the G.I.S. So that was twelve, plus knowing they would be done in like three weeks. It cost the town around three thousand dollars to get those done because they hadn't been done in five years. That's the reason we went that route. And as you and John met today, there was twenty-three that needed minor repairs and repairs, which you're working on. They will be painted and then you will take it over next year, which they'll be done annually and not get that far behind. And so you will also have the mapping system on all the hydrants, which are now in the G.I.S.
John just told me the heat or the books for the fire department to get those put out and scrub units of work.
Isn't that correct, John? Because I know that she's two working together and it had been in five years and they were supposed to be maintenance like yearly. So we got it done last year and they were done in like three weeks. Is that not correct? So it costs approximately three thousand dollars for us to do it. So I know there was mention of what we had to pay when we were doing the G.I.S. system. That was reduced what we were going to pay the individuals to do it. So I mean, it's completing.
And I think that G.I.S. are not just mine for fire hydrants. I mean, that's our, that's our whole water disr--
Well, I mean, that was just that section that was saved. But I mean, just to clarify that those numbers did not cost us that much money. It was only around twenty-five hundred to three thousand to get it completed. So any confusion that came in there.
I have a question about the codes enforcement report. So a compliance letter issued, that seems like it came to a positive resolution. So one of your letters, they fixed it and it's good. So I guess the five follow-ups, those are, those are five that didn't get resolved?
Those are five carryovers from last night. It ranges anything from there, they've not really taken, taken any action on it yet. So now we'll go to the next step, you know, maybe kind of look at court and see if we can come up with a resolution that way. Follow-ups to just making sure that they're, they're doing their part to try to get compliant. I mean, I've got one citizen that's trying to get compliant that's just having trouble. There's another citizen that's had several complaints, but you know, he's disabled. So I mean, we don't want to throw him out to the code, you know, to the dirt for the code. So I just, if we can find maybe a church youth group or somebody like that that's, that's willing to work with him. I mean, I just want positive outcome for our community.
But you are having him, he's been, now the bonds could be able to clean up and they will be cleaning it up and some. And I know you said you had a couple of refusals that they wouldn't sign, so it still goes into effect, correct, Earl? Yes. And then somewhere on that thirty-day window, right?
There.
So you've had some refusals to sign, so you're waiting thirty days?
I had one refusal. I mean, it's, it may be, the more you look into it, he talked to Earl and he threw Earl into the bus, evidently. You know, this had to be picking up the second tank and then it's catching for a second. Well, Earl gave him the blessings on that, which that's fine, but the other side of it is violating town code. So what he thinks and what Earl's thinks is two different things. So now if we can just mediate that, I think it'll come to the end. We're on that.
But you don't address it?
Yes.
I talked to them, they were virtual, they don't even--
Can we general, it sounds like we're making progress.
Yeah. The little signs they stick all over town, that's the biggest problem. I, I think I see is just the, the small signs that they just stick where they want to.
But they never pick them up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead down to parking rinks. We, well, also just Jared is off. He has a family situation he's dealing with. We do have a, is it one officer that's still on workers comp? And we have a position that's open, so they're rotating the shifts. And so we spoke with them this morning, so they might be out on a call. We're going to find out where they're at and meet them down to the bottom. Parking rinks, Jessica?
I think I'd like for Doreen to talk about Memorial Day services that'll be next week.
The flags will be out either Thursday or Friday of this week. We're just kind of waiting on the weather to see what it's going to do. We'll have the crosses and the flags out. Memorial Day at eleven-thirty at the flagpole in front of City Hall or in front of the fire department. We're going to have a prayer. The flag will be at half star. We will do the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts will raise the flag at twelve o'clock. We'll play chaps. It's basically, it's going to be about a fifteen, twenty-minute service. That's all it's going to be.
Here we go.
But hopefully we'll get the flags out by the end of this week, depending on weather.
Okay, um, just mentioned baseball. Baseball season is over and ended last week. And we also have finally gotten the lights at the baseball field repaired. And that was about twenty-five hundred dollars to connect the free lights that we got from Mr. Lawrence who opened the new laundry, the village laundry over at Country Mark. And I have quotes that were advertised for fence repair at the baseball field. And that's about twenty-five hundred dollars too. And Foxy Farms Construction will do those repairs. And they're ordering the materials now, so it should be in good shape for next year with new lights and new fencing. Then I want to mention July the fourth. We're planning to have our regular parade on the morning of July the fourth. It's a Monday. The lineup will be at nine o'clock and then the parade will roll at ten. The town is actually going to invite all of the veterans that are in our area to be grand marshal of the parade. We'll have a float for them to ride. And for the theme, it will be faith, freedom, and family. We'll have three awards that'll be given. One is for the best expression of the theme. The second will be the most town spirit and the third one will be the most creative entry. After the parade, people will go their own way and then regather at nine o'clock at the ball, ball field for fireworks. So that's our plan for the fourth.
And how are you going to have the people that want to be on the float, because we'll have to know the signs. Once we get the signs up, you're going to--
Yeah, we're going to reach out. We'll reach out to try to get all of our veterans to, they need to get one ride on the float to get in touch with them.
Does anyone else have any questions for parking rink? Uh, the utility manager, John?
I don't really have any English. Y'all have any questions?
We got this from Travis, that model. He wanted to talk a little bit about that. He wants, Travis actually contacted us today and he's having medical procedures, so he cannot be here today. I'm Terrence Wilson, maybe it's not Travis, it's not you, because we got a lot of people the same name. But he presented us with this study for capacity that we had looked at dimming, which goes into detail identifying customers, consumption, reader meeting, locations of services, meter numbers, customer time, identification of water and sewer. As you know, of course, we had the meeting with Beth Jones, several others. Travis was here and John was here. We received a half a million dollar grant last year. And then we have, the town of Montegoles has been identified for non-competitive fund of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, which is one point two three million dollars. But what we did to meet our match by doing the G.I.S. system, we've met our match according to Beth Jones. So we have two things here. To do this capacity study, it must be done by an engineer. It, our engineering firm has presented this would cost a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Not only can we identify errors in the line or things that need to be repaired in our lines, it will identify our capacity and our growth ability and also a design model for expansion to the sewer plant, which we know in the next couple of years has to be done. But it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand according to Beth Jones, according to our grant administrator and according to the non-competitive funds, based upon us receiving the one point two three million dollars. And what we can do, we will of course be reimbursed for everything we spent because that will be handled through Southeastern Department. This office is the only administrator of the money since we got the grants to them. Now, they're also applying for American Recovery Money, which is infrastructure money, but none of that will be released until later in the year. So we would have to approve this. But I think we all know it's necessary now that we start a capacity study because we want to grow healthy as we do our planning, our corridor planning. And it's going to take this to see how we do grow for future development. And we've got a lot of development going up. So, but we have to approve this contract. John, do you see any wave inside?
I don't. We got a new camera. We have to, you know, repair the design and several things like that.
And the two entities, though Tracy's and you have a similar working on theirs currently to speak, aren't they?
Yeah.
So we have to go to this-- Yes, we have to approve this contract to be able to start the study based upon us being reimbursed from the non-competitive funds and the A.R.C. clients.
Where, where's it coming out of the budget?
They'll come out of water and sewer. Well, you can't even come out of the budget. It's our water and sewer enterprise funds will be written in verse eight, but we can't even, it can't come out or be added into it until we approve the contract.
Yeah, I was just curious where the budget lines are coming out of.
Well, you would have to come out of capital improvement, wouldn't it, out of water and sewer? What would come out of, what is, what is our enterprise box?
It will just come out of water and sewer.
It comes out of water and sewer, the enterprise funds, the one point something million dollars. But it's, you have the budget up--
So we'll, we'll have to do a budget amendment to increase contracted services? Okay. Yeah, because we don't, we don't have enough contracted services.
But it does not come out of our general fund, enterprise funding.
Right, we got, we got eighty thousand budgeted within the enterprise funds of water and sewer. And so I guess we'll have to do a budget amendment upgrade now.
Yeah, and when you would have to do this, we just didn't know because, I mean, probably in the last eight months, nine months, the largest piece of property has only had more development than most people said we had in two years. So that's where we're at. And then we can grow in a healthy way.
Well, this is going to be done regardless.
Right.
So it's the approval of the contract, what, what's the name of it?
It's L.J. L.J. Engineering, which is the farm we use and we are doing.
If anybody's curious what the contract is about, I've got it up on, on screen.
It's for one twenty miles.
And that, we get reimbursed for that?
That's due to the non-competitive funds and the A.R.C. before we spend it. We will be reimbursed.
Are y'all good with it?
Well, we'll have to do a roll call vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with L.A. Engineering.
L.J. Hey.
L.J. Hey. Engineering, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Nate?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Yes. So that way we can go ahead and contact Beth to make sure we've set up the process. Do we have to approve her administrative contract? Okay, because I thought we already have the contract with Sarah. We are having it with him. And then we'll have to contact Travis and tell him before we start that we make sure that funding process is set up.
It may be, you know, it may be later on here we'll do that.
Well, the camera, maybe with the rest of this process, he said he could go ahead and start. Oh, there's a huge range. But at least it's been now approved that we can start and get all the funding in place. So do y'all have anything else pointing? John?
One thing, it's going to have a good utility. Somebody asked me, was I still going to use a tornado alarm?
A what?
A tornado alarm.
There's a horn or a sounding thing down on nine-one-one. But now that we don't have nine-one-one employees, we'll have to check with Dawn and see if they'll do it because it's, it may be a error.
Well, somebody asked me the other day and I told my ass.
Well, I'm sure if we had a tornado, they would, but I don't know if they're going to do the testing like they're going to winces. We'll have to check with Dawn and Heather and see if they plan on doing that. And we can just, you, you want to, you can follow it up with Heather and, and then see what they're saying. We'll record the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Dustin, are you here for the police report? Do you mind coming up to the unit, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'd have been here sooner, but y'all got some terrible fog.
Have you heard it, Jenny?
I'm halfway up Swanee Mountain, I couldn't see him from him. Listen, Jared printed this off and it's extremely small, so I forgot my magnifying glass. Let's see where they're at here. For, for the month of April, we had six incidents that required a report. We've had only two arrests. Well, that don't add up because it says that we had three males arrested and one female arrested. So I'm also, we had four arrests. Yeah, it was probably printed so small, you just couldn't see four of them. We had two domestic violence cases and six miscellaneous reports for a total of fourteen reports for the month. Anything else that I need to?
Nate?
Are you good? Everything good?
Well, with that fog, it's not good. See you, Dad. I guess I'm ready to go with the camera. I don't know, I'm wired up pretty good here.
Well, at least you're picking up it's on for sale. Does anyone else have anything?
It's your hearing aid.
Does anyone else have anything important? They're off, thank you, we appreciate it. All right, um, codes enforcement's been done with Travis. Somebody's down there. Okay, thank you, Neil. Codes enforcement's been done with Travis. So Earl, Earl, I'm Nate. When it, building inspector, we didn't get at your line, I'm sorry, I apologize. And then planning commission, Janet, are you going to do the planning commission? No, okay, George.
Doesn't matter, I get called a lot of things. I have two business permits. Uh, I'm not sure if these people hear to that, but Randy Butler requested a building permit here for Untangled. That's a beauty salon down there. And I went down there and looked at it and there were areas where he had to put up some more emergency lighting and extra signs and a fire extinguisher and all the same, which he did. I went back and looked at it, so I'm ready to sign this one for him.
Can we give him a temporary, nobody's here--
I'm sorry, what?
Since you usually give the person's here, can you give him a temporary till the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to sign it. If y'all want to request him to be here. So if that's all, it's up to you.
We don't have everyone else here, so we want to just do a temporary till then.
Yeah, I think you're next.
Can you do a temporary, can you do a temporary until he's here at the next meeting?
I just want to turn this into, you know, you can call it temporary or whatever, you know.
And we can request him to be here at the next meeting or if you don't.
There you want to do. The other one is for Mr. Nelda Sorensen. And this is a little, little cabin type home back home, uh, one twenty-five Lindsay Avenue. And she wants to be able to do a little, what they call Airbnb or whatever they call it.
She's not there. Well, she's not really there, but she's her real respect.
Oh, she has a rift. Right, yeah, I went, I went out there and checked it and what I do almost, I just check to make sure the smoke alarms are in place and they're operating and then fire extinguishers are there. And I also asked them to put a placard somewhere in a prominent location where the fire extinguisher is at, just in case if somebody's in there that they're not familiar with all that, that's, nobody will. Uh, I have signed that one and it's, it's, and if you want to have any questions, lady back there, I might answer that.
Can you tell us what the zoning is for that location?
I presume it's R-two. It's residential area. I didn't even, I, I've been living here a long time, but I've never been back in there. It's virgin territory for me.
Where is it?
It is, um, you know where, you know where Navy Cliffs lives?
Yes.
It's on Jim Long. It's if you, it's the, heard, the driveways are right beside each other. You just can't see it from the highway. The driveway goes back through the woods. They're from Pensacola, like a little bit.
I know, but they used to live here at a different place and, because they would, used to drive a mile to lunch.
Yeah. Her husband passed away about a year and a half ago, and she's back in Pensacola now, but she's looking to put her little cabin on Airbnb for--
I don't think it's in the city limits.
I don't think so.
I don't think it's in the city limits, so.
I didn't, I didn't look it up. He didn't provide for it.
I don't think that's in the city limits. We can check it, Nate, but I don't believe it is because I think it starts--
She'll long, long street, sampling street. Is it all the way at the end of Jim Long on the right? It's out.
That's what I thought. It's not in the city limits, so I don't think that would, is that on the count or does it? Well, so--
So we'll just, we'll just sort this one out.
Yeah.
So wait, we don't need it?
No, no, if it's not the city limits, we can't give you an apartment.
Do you know if you need--
You have to check with Mayor and Town and they, their Airbnb.
Your Mayor County planning is on?
So Airbnb will automatically collect the hotel motel? I don't think they have to do any--
Okay, so-- And then does it, Nate does it and Doreen can.
Okay. So she doesn't really give anything else Airbnb will do?
I'm just going to put a big door across this right here.
Now, Mayor Kenny Mount was reporting on the business permit, so I would call the--
He did that, yeah. He got it, he did that, right.
Yeah. That would kill, you're outside the city, I think.
Looks like this, looks like the city limits, because one block beyond Airbnb.
Well, I don't feel so bad about that, I don't want to work with that.
Well, she was under the impression that she was paying city taxes.
We don't have the city tax.
Okay.
She, she may do county tax.
That might be what it is.
Uh, I also have a few updates. Pilot out here is fixing to do an extensive remodel on the inside. It is extensive, I didn't plan to view on it. And anyway, it's, it's, it's a big, big project. The other project that we've been dealing with for about six or eight months now, which was called Southern Tire, which is on the same property as Pilot is. I am hearing now that they're ready to go on their deal. They were running into issues with, but muddy, you know, materials that's gone sky high and whatever they had in their budget wasn't going to work and they've been waiting. They probably got a contractor hired now. So that project is fixing to, is fixing to go out there. Also received a call today, Matt Sopratio, and his, his thing, and barn thing and playground thing. He has, I believe he's got a contractor lined up now that's going to be able to finish that project, finish that project. So that, I believe that one's going to go now. And outside of that, anybody got any questions that I might be able to answer?
Nate? Allen? Jessica? Doreen?
You said Southern Tire?
Southern Tire was the, is the name of it.
Okay, but Pilot, is Pilot going to be doing something also?
Well, they took their two different projects, Pilot is one project and the City Tire is another. Now, the planning commission, Southern Tire is a brand new, out of the ground, out of the ground structure. So, planning commission has already approved their site plan, it was approved last year. But just, of course, Pilot is a, they're, just for not changing footprint and that's, and they don't have to have a site plan for that. But it is, it's, I'm just wondering if they're gonna be able to do that closing, have them, so them, them win, I look at that.
It's insane.
They're getting the whole wind side of the place.
They're gonna have a meat and tree and a gathering of pizzas and, you know, and cleanses.
Anyway, it's a huge project.
Wish I had seen it off in time.
Uh, let's, now we're just talking about the big trick just to meet, so we can talk about an idea that we're going out there.
Okay, we are rolling this idea out for fourth of July, having um, a food truck day, we've got to investigate it a little bit more, but um. We're gonna try to get food trucks up here for the fourth of July for an holiday event, so we're gonna work on that.
I'm gonna let you know, even if we can't, the vendor's permitting, which is a, you know, a minimum amount for that one day only, but it wouldn't have anything to do with the health department or their permits, so go around and work.
Typically, anybody that's got a food truck and works their, works, and works their, oh, they already got a health department too.
That's why I'm saying, you know, it's like you said, we don't wanna create a liability with somebody starving, but we also wanna try the, try and see how it works if it works out.
You, you wanna get, you're gonna invite all the food trucks to come in without having to pay a, a peddler's fee or whatever.
Or one gesture, one day.
Not have to buy a permit for a year, you know, I'm saying, yeah.
And after then, Travis, they would have to do that fifty dollar or a hundred dollar, whichever, you know, the amount is, they'd have to do, but if we try it, it works, so we can say that. Planning commission, I think it's.
So I'm gonna give two reports, um, one from the planning commissions from the meeting of May seventeenth, and also one from the town hall meeting that we held April nineteenth. So the planning commission, we met on May seventeenth and uh, we made an announcement that we were having a workshop prior to all planning commission meetings, so that we can um. So it makes it easier for the citizens to be involved in what's happening within the community and discuss what's going on. So at the meeting, um, we heard four requests. The first request was to approve the site plan for the convenient, for convenience and retail store at seven forty West Main Street. The matter was tabled until June seventh after requesting more details regarding the overall plan. Uh, the second was a request to add apartments to the C two zoning ordinance, and that was tabled until further information regarding a case, by case ruling can be dis- deserved. The third was a request to rezone property behind McDonald's from R one to R four, amended from, and they made an amendment to change it from a R one to an R two. And the request was denied by a vote, a voice vote. Then with, the fourth one was a request to rezone three fifty five Wells Street from an I one to an R four. The planning, the plan was for a glamping camping site, and after much discussion, a request was made to rezone it from an I one to an R three. The rezoning was for the R one, to, from I one to R three was approved through recommendation to the town council for approval. And you'll have to read that three times, I think. Then the, for the town hall, for the town hall meeting, um, then April nineteenth. The main concerns that came out of that meeting were, um, are there any zoning limitations for short-term rentals? Um, the safety at the Run's Nest Street under Highway eighty one, or forty one, at that intersection. And um, then there was the consideration, they asked if we were gonna have any impact fees for future development and individual home sites. Um, to help with the cost of sewage and water, and I'm sorry, my voice has gone shot, the fog's affecting it. And then there are a lot of concerns from the neighbors regarding how neat and clean their neighborhoods are, and they, um. So we tried to explain to them that sometimes it's about neighbors taking care of neighbors and not always can the, the town be responsible for some of this stuff. But that's one of their concerns. And the fifth thing that we're gonna do is we're having a survey, um, that's gonna go out in the water bills in the next month, and it will be online and the results should be submitted by June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
All day questions? Nate, you have any question?
Yeah.
Alvin?
No.
Jessica, I don't, go on.
Is this water bill gonna have a, is it just gonna be a paper, the, the survey just gonna be a paper survey?
No, it's gonna be a long.
It'll be online and there will be a paper survey for those people who don't not, do not have access to app, online. Hopefully, uh, and there's gonna be one block in the back, the, at the very bottom, it's supposed to be um, objective, two false, yes, no's, one to threes. Um, so that there's not a lot of discussion, at the very end, there'll be discussion block for fifty words or less, what you would like Montego to be.
And then, um, South Eastern Development's gonna do the summary board tonight, and then we'll have to look at, um, the contract of, where the architect and the Miami's person to actually design it like the one we see down here in the floor. So that'll probably something, can do hopefully the end of June or early June or November. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to. The first reading of the budget, which is uh, twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. And that's in your packet, let's see, and then, over there, that's. Ordinance number zero eight dash two twenty twenty-two, no, wait a minute, hold on. The budget's not twenty twenty-two, that's being pretty. Sorry about that, I got a problem. What's the number on the budget ordinance? There is no number for the budget, I apologize. So it would be the first reading for the town of Montego budget for the year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Cam?
So I'd be most curious, I put a summary of it up, you can, it, it doesn't have a lot of details, but, but it gives the uh, the main summary of what's happening. What, what we did was we uh, budgeted in some raises considering the cost of living that we got, we budgeted in, an increase in fuel costs across the board. I think we added some money to parks and recreation, um, to take care of some deferred maintenance, what else did we, did we change in there?
I think that's the majority, we just kept, of course, the money to work on the streets, which we have to include, and the um, money to hire the uh, architect for the design of.
Yep.
Miami, kept that in there.
We had, we had put some money in last year's budget to hire uh, someone to help us with planning and implementation on the downtown corridor, and that hasn't happened, so we, we make sure that that money is still in there for the next budget year. But we ended up with, if the forecast revenues are correct, um, we should have uh, revenues exceeding expenses by, I think, right, ninety, ninety-seven thousand, I think is what the summary says.
That's in general fund, correct?
That's in the general fund, and water and sewer. Looks like about a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase in net positions, is that right, David?
Yes.
Think I got the right line there?
And that's including the fuel cost increase to what fifty percent, we did include some of those factors in that we knew were gonna happen. Sam, do we have any?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Myself is yes, and then we'll have another reading at the next meeting for Nate. Next, now, is, I'm sorry, this is the amendment to the budget, which is zero eight twenty-two, and it's to amend our budget to, would increase expenditures and, uh, to, one decrease in expenditures. Did you have that up, Nate?
Yeah, I can bring it up.
This is just to be able to close out the uh, twenty twenty-two budget.
Let me see if I can shrink it so. Get it all on one page.
Shouldn't get too much space in.
Yeah, maybe already be a problem, I don't know, can, can anybody actually see what's up there?
Yeah, you can see it from there.
It's, it's a trade-off between getting it all on one page and. Here.
We're good?
There's, there's the bottom line. So I had a question about this, uh, we don't, the increase and decreases don't match. And um, so I know the, the money is coming out of our operating reserve, it's coming out of our, the general fund balance. Um, but I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense to at least note that on, on budget changes like this, because it, it looks like we're just printing money out of thin air. If not, if we don't have, if we don't have a decrease, if there's not a decrease to match the increase, um, it's not at all clear how these budget include, how, how these budget changes are happening. I mean, I'd love to decrease five thousand dollars for program services and have it equal seventy-one thousand, but it doesn't. So is, is that something, and that's something I noticed in other towns, Dave, their, their increases and decreases match, is, is that something, and we don't have to stop this one, but I'm just asking if we can begin to do that.
No, you met with the audit, with the CBA, just like the rest of us did, and I think that she explained this to you at the meeting, because you did ask her that, correct?
No, I asked the question and, and they said that you had, you had told me that you had just seen it and you, and you said we need to ask it later.
Yeah, well, I mean, that was the reason I had, I got it at the same time you did, so, and uh, yep, can you help us here?
Um, it's, it's, I'm trying to cash, I mean, I'm trying, I'm in cash, but we're in a couple of. You have to increase it because you don't have enough money in the budget to cover it.
And the only thing that decreased in this line was program services, correct? So that's where the difference in this is the sixty-one thousand on the second page, there's another page there, Nate, did you see the back?
That is the page number.
Oh, okay, and that's where we're gonna be conditions for that.
Yeah.
So.
Well, what, it's just, it's just not clear that we're actually completing our cash reserves when we do something like that, if we don't put it on a piece of paper, and I'm, I'm just.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, because at the budget meeting, we said to ask her to identify these things more, that was one of the things that, that we did make. And I know that government accounting is different, but, so if we did the first reading, we can have an answer for the second reading, which we can put up, because we were all in the same meeting at the same time, and asked the same questions. So we'd agree, and, no, we don't print money, officials like that, which is a ten thousand dollars, so.
But this is not gonna affect this, so we can go ahead.
We can go ahead, we can go ahead, I'm just asking.
We've got two readings, so we're not, so we'll have to read it, and we'll have to do the second reading in May, and we can have the answer from the CBA firm then, and we'll have it here detailed so that it can be seen. Is that good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm happy to approve it, I just, I never, other towns that have involved in, don't do this, the increases, the increases always manage.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve ordinance O eight dash Q two budget amendment.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Sam, we're also gonna do a roll call, but any other discussion? Besides, we will have a answer from the CBA one that she did it this way, which the CBA works with the auditor, and we were not written up last year, but we will have a definition and answer to this question, so for it means we, it is May. No, June. June, no, that's on, okay. So, we'll do a roll call, but Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Alright, engineering is. We are good now, here for example, John was up, the next thing you have there is the contract from Green Spot. Oh, wait, another ordinance, ordinance zero nine two two. And this is an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the town of Montego, Tennessee, for the zoning parcel zero zero three point zero zero, Man County Map forty-nine. From I one industrial district to R three medium density residential district. And this was the one mentioned from the planning commission, I made a reference, that uh, we go from, well, they had asked R four, but then we said R three. With the property that Mr. James David Oliver owns, and Mr. Adams is here that's talking about developing it later, so to represent Mr. Oliver giving questions. And so we can reach to my phone, but he was out of town today, because he didn't come.
So I sit in on this on the planning commission, so if you guys have got any questions, go for it.
It was also, it's up from Wells Road, that's where it's at, uh, across the interstate bridge is where this property is located.
Could you extend that a lot, you changed from the R four to the R three classification, or you recommend that?
R four, you can get lower square footage, right? R three, you have to have a minimum six hundred square feet. But in R three, you can still have RV park.
Let, let me just jump in there a minute and hopefully clarify something.
Yes, Nate?
The city of Montego does not have an R four. It's in your zoning reg, but it was eliminated when you adopted the life zoning ordinance. So if you're looking at going R four for anything, you, in my opinion, you would need to ordinance it back in for the zoning reg.
And the other time, we've discussed the concept and recommendations, that we are not ready for tiny house developments, which that would fall under, under R four right now. So, and right now, you can do what, the six hundred square foot is that what?
R one, yeah, R two.
An R two, and then an eight hundred square feet of house.
That would be, I'm not just, that's the way I, I see it, now that might be a sound question down the road, but when the, when the, when we had to redo the zoning, because uh, you remember the time that supposedly there wasn't enough? Time given for ten days for the notice to go out for adopting the zoning ordinance, and, and they had to do it again. When it was done again, R four was left out. That's my recollection.
Didn't we say we really didn't think there may get to be an R four in the city limits of Montego?
That's what was discussed, yeah.
That's, um, that's what I'm on.
And that's still what the majority of people talk to me.
Hey, you know, I tried, I tried two, three times after that to get uh, the people of South East East Columbus to address that with the planning commission, uh, but it was followed on up here.
Well, I think they're trying now to get caught up with their selling, making contracts now they're dealing with, and the development, that's, that's the reason. On Janet's, and she did it, is that we now have workshops and we're trying, Richard, you're back there, that we're now, the show, we're all stuck trying to address those items, but there's a lot of items that we're now addressing, correct? And that's whenever we said we need to revisit and make sure how we identified or not.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I know it's still in the zoning regulations, but it's not on the zoning map.
That's right. So.
I would just say, this is an instance, in my, in my opinion, where R four might fit in, he's not looking at, these folks aren't looking at doing a tiny home community, they're looking at doing an RV resort, and those typically have small square footed, short-term rentals. So, uh, and I noticed in his phasing that that's not in phase one, so I'm, I'm certainly happy to support the R three, but I would, I would support if he were to come back later and, and have a different phase that included those, the domes and the treehouses and, and things like I see at RV resorts all over the country. I think, I think this is an appropriate use for it, I share some concerns that others have about the tiny home communities that are proliferating across the plateau, but this seems very different to me.
Well, we wanna be different, and I think that's the goal of this community, is having a, an encompassed and closed resort that's very immersive, and I think that's a great point, because that's something that we did a discussion about with our team, is just, would this be a sliding scale where we might not do as many tiny homes? I mean, you mentioned the domes and the treehouses, and those by nature aren't really financeable at all, or they're, they're something that's kinda unique for this community and unique in this area, but you see in Gallowberg and other places, the treehouses have taken off, so that would be a great application for having R fours, to be able to do those small, smaller structures around, you're building around trees and stuff, so.
Right now, we're actually, the recommendation of the zoning, and I know we had this discussion because I said, I feel we're not ready for R fours and tiny homes. You know, I've had this discussion. We disagree. I mean, that's, it's okay to disagree respectfully. But is, if we want to pass the ordinance on the first reading, which we'll have to have a public hearing and we'll have to have another reading on this ordinance to change that from I one. Which, and it was brought up in the meeting. I'll go ahead and bring it up here. James David brought it up correctly, if I'm wrong. This is the only I one we have, correct, Senator?
For what?
This is the only I one we have. And this section is, and not only this, James David currently has a permit for, or a sand plant, which could be built over there and he's willing to change it to a different format where the property can be used. And that's what was said at the meeting, correct?
Could I ask a question? Because I don't know, is this, I don't know if this is a calling for us to make any statements on this or is there going to be another time?
Well, we're going to have another reading in a public hearing.
There'll be a public hearing.
But what I, my question would be, we talked in the planning meeting that because the glamping and some of those sites, does the R three permit us to have sites for people to have tents? Does it also give us, we talked about that there would be. A maybe of some sort of approval to do the tree houses. In that if it comes down to that the tree houses need to be six hundred square feet, we can probably do that. But like tents and domes, they don't traditionally go that big and I wouldn't think that would fall under that jurisdiction anyway, would it?
That may be something. Earl, are those temporary structures or permanent structures? Do you know how it?
I don't know if you've got any zoning area. I mean, that would have to be clarified through the planning commission. I mean, there is a way to do a mobile home park and there is a way to do an RV park. But I'm not sure those include tents.
I think we just have to clarify that they're not permanent structures, which seem to be.
Yeah. The only one that would be, no, well, I was just going to add, the only ones that would be permanent would be tree houses. But we could raise those to our steel houses. But if you want, technically it's going to be a steel, it's not going to be. Technically supported by a tree, but it'll look like it is. But those could fall within that same guideline. We could make those six hundred square feet if there's some tolerance on screen porches.
But we can't get into that here. We're just looking into zoning. I mean, I'm not correct because that goes back to Earl in the planning, at the planning, Earl, in the planning. But I do know this, that Anya is looking at the RV uses and the campground uses at that to where. And I know because she, she didn't mention that, but right now we can't approve any of that. That has to, we're just looking at rezoning property. And this would be the first reading to it, which was recommended to us. So all that stuff has to back up and go through the proper steps, correct, Earl? We may wait on that one. No, we can't because it's a minute. Nate goes to. Well, are you? Well, Adam stepped out just for a minute, so y'all want to give him just a second too. Well, we've got to approve the next thing too, so we've got two more. I want this to be made a motion and second and then just pass it when he comes back if y'all want to do that. If y'all don't want to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance number nine dash twenty-two to change the zoning of parcel three, tax map forty-nine from I one to R three.
Okay, and I'll say that. Any other discussion? Roll call though. Nate?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Dorie?
Yes.
My step.
Yes.
Okay, we've done the engineering. Greensville contract, we had that reviewed by Sam. That is EV, electric vehicle charging sites that would be replaced with no cost to us. We might receive at the end of the year a little rebate from it. They have to maintain those. We did have them reviewed by an attorney because it's a legal bonding document. Samuel said he felt like it was in a good position for the town. We also, y'all attended a meeting because we allowed the state of Tennessee to host one. We can also put state EV charging stations in town or allow them to put any one in here. We just don't receive any money from them. They have to maintain it. So if we want to go ahead, this one, behind Town Hall would be replaced. And then we would have three other sites that we will work with people in town to replace those, but we might get a small rebate. But at least we would provide that amenity to people that have electric cars.
And this is the mid level, which takes an hour to charge.
Yeah, it's like, it's the faster one than what we had, but it's not, I think that's still considered a flash charger, isn't it? An hour.
The fast ones were fifty thousand dollars each.
Well, we don't have to say anything else, but the next one's for twenty thousand dollars each.
We can't, the level sounds.
We can get into that right here.
Equipment, fifty kilowatts DC, level two charging. So this is the mid, this is the mid level chargers.
And of course, as far as charging, we deal with none of that. That's done with the contractor, which is Greensville. We have to, they don't give me approval. We can sign the contract and start working that process to have it placed in town again.
We get five percent of the revenue off of you.
Yeah, I said it was, well, we don't know what five percent is and I think they do it once a year, but we do get an annual amount and hopefully that's money we didn't have before. It's not possible, it's anything. It's also bringing people into the town that wouldn't be. So what does the council's will? Do you want to approve the contract with Greensville? I can go ahead and, no. Any other discussion? I'll invite contract free. Now, we have the Hart and family properties that wanted to be put on the agenda. That's what they told me earlier for that, is that correct? Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're finished. Unless you want to just hang out here.
We are, we applied, we were the other group that applied the other day for rezoning originally from an R four and then we changed that to an R two. It was denied. I'm not sure about all the reasonings for the denial. There was a lot of discussion that went on about that project. That was not germane to the use question, which is what zoning is. Zoning is a land use question. So under the, under the code, we're allowed to come and appeal that decision to you to make, to give us the R two zoning. I want to state that on the front end that we're, we're going to move forward with a development on this property. One way, yeah, really all we're voting on is the smaller, is the smallest houses possible. That's all the zoning vote is. It's a vote of whether you're going to allow us to build six hundred square foot houses or eight hundred square foot houses. That's, that's, it can't be more simple than that. Given what just transpired with the ordinance before this, I mean, it seems to me kind of arbitrary that we were denied. And they were given an R three, which is less restrictive than what we were asking. So I guess that's the main point of what we're looking to get. You know, we're going to, you know, I've had conversations with Joe Lester and we're going to move forward with all the engineering work and everything that has to take place. It's about two hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering work. That has to take place before we can get preliminary site plan approval from the planning commission. That's where all those other questions that were brought up in the meeting get answered. Silver water access. So I'm just here to ask you to please vote to give us the R two zoning. So that we can build a slightly smaller home and bring some affordable housing or more affordable housing to the market. I mean, it costs, it costs about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to build six hundred square feet. It costs a little over a hundred fifty thousand dollars to build eight hundred square feet. It's a big chip, big difference. And you know, if somebody's trying to, in, some people want to live in the smaller homes, some people don't. But there seem to be a lot of people that do. The market is, is very hot right now for this type of product. Talked to one builder the other day. He's got, he's got over two hundred people on a waiting list for, for one of these properties. So we're not, we're doing all site built homes. Nothing is being, everything will be brought to code, built to code. Your inspector will be involved in every aspect of this. All of your inspectors will. They'll have nothing towed to site. Everything will be built on site. So once again, just would like to see, see that R two zoning that would allow us to build a little smaller home than what our current zoning does.
I mean, I don't have, there's a lot of questions that comes up my mind and explaining some of them, but then they're. Part of the question is, how many houses are going to be in this?
I know the plan's called, the plan has a hundred and two. Now, we don't know if that's, if it's going to end up there or less. Because two, one of two is about the most that we can, that when we, we asked the various to draw it, that we could fit. And reality is, the engineering firm's going to get into this and dig into it and say, well, we've got to reduce it here. We've got to change it here. We figure probably we may lose as much as ten lots just with engineering. You know, a great example is, we know that there's going to probably have to be something either creative done about sewer. Or there's going to be, have to be some, some infrastructure put in.
That is a concern.
Right. And that, you know, we can put a, we could put, we have the land. We could put a package unit on this development if, if we had to. That would be its own sewer system. Takes care of everything. It's about the size of an eighteen foot. We don't want to do that. It's expensive, but we can. But you know, I, I told John, you know, last week, I said, you know, we're, we're not here. You know, there's a lot of work that has to be done on that end. You got a huge forest main sewer that goes directly across this property, you know? In theory, that's where we're going to tie in, in my mind, is that we're going to gravity feed the neighborhood to that point. And then the engineers will figure out how to get it into the forest main system. But, but we are so far away from that, that there's questions being answered and we can't get them answered. Until we know what we're working with from, from the zoning side.
Well, the thing, I'm sure everyone asked questions and my question was too, and they have already been answered, although you may not know. Is how are you going to get in and out? Where are you going to go in and out for that place?
We have two entrances. So, you know, we, we heard the concerns with the first idea, which was that we were just going to come in off of Rinses. We heard that. So we added a second entrance that comes off Dixie Highway. So.
How are we going to Dixie Highway?
What?
You said Dixie Highway?
Yeah, it's forty-one.
Forty-one, okay.
Forty-one. As you're going down the highway, if you're going to the T dot, it's Dixie Highway. They still call it forty-one, they call it Dixie Highway. Yeah, so we've, we've got a plan that's pretty much right across the, for an entrance right across from that big commercial building that's up down there. Kind of in the flat park where we, we don't have to do this. It's, there's a, in fact, there's a sewer main right there. It's the old gravity fed line. I think it probably went to plant one. It's now, it winds around. We got, we got your GIS map. It's beautiful, by the way. It's really helpful to have that. But yeah, so we added the second, the second entrance because we didn't want to overlook positive concerns.
When you say you added the second entrance, I'll say, I mean, I'll just be frank with you. I think that that's a lot of development and any use of Rinsness when you're aware of this. Because Joe Lester, I mean, he's, he's owns a lot of property up there. Not only is the property beside a Sonic, which is looking at a, was it Montegoal? That's big, I mean, it's got to come before the planning commission, but it's already been submitted and so a couple of businesses there as well. And there's mentioned a million dollar view that's going to be developed. It's a little farther down, which there's an access road. And all this is in the works. So you're talking about that traffic and of course, Mr. Wolf, I talked to you this afternoon again. And he said there would have to be a traffic study done for them to allow that you know you have access there. So my question to you is why do you not do the traffic study, which is going to have to be done regardless, and then come back with the development in that area that could be.
We like intend that, that the traffic study for Rinsness and Main Street. You know, I don't have, I don't have the attorney here tonight or Joe here, but you know, we're going to pay for the traffic study on forty-one. Because we have to, to get the permit from the state to put a, what they call a commercial driveway in. We have to do that stuff. But I'm not so sure that legally we're obligated to do a traffic study for the city of Montegoal for that intersection.
Well, I would wonder if you could.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know.
You know, we have, you know, and I'm not so sure that, I don't, like I said, I don't have the attorney here, but I'm not so sure we can deny access to Rinses. By, by law. I mean, the state of Tennessee says you have to have road access and that's our, that's the road access. I mean, I, you know, but once again, we're, we're talking about specifics that, that, that come down into the platting in, in that stage. Not in something that comes down to zoning stage.
I don't think anybody's denying you access to Rand's Road.
Well, we're saying we got to have all.
Well, I'm asking you, but we know that you got to have the traffic study to use forty-one. I don't know, and honestly, that is a legal question. And if now's the point that I need to contact the city attorney and ask him because the development so large at the next, tomorrow, I mean, I could do that. We are trying not to use, like Mr. Ray said, the attorneys, you know, it is an expense on the town, but this is also the likelihood of an area that we need to know that question. And we're not trying to stop growth. We want to grow in a healthy way. We just approved tonight, would have a capacity study.
Yeah, that uses more water and sewer than what we proposed.
No, I'm talking about, oh, study, not theirs. Theirs is a, well, um, theirs is a, is, they've said it's going to be a resort. And I mean, another thing to ask you, is this, is, is this the concept of rentals? Is this the RVOs? I mean, we still haven't got all this clarified.
How do we know who's going to buy the lots?
I don't know. That's.
I mean, how, you're asking.
We told us this is rentals.
I mean, you, no, it's not rentals. It's, we're selling the lots to people that want to own homes. Now, whether, what they choose to do with the home, that's theirs. But we have no idea, we have no idea who's local, who's going to buy it and who's not local. We have no idea who's going to be full time or who's going to be part time. We have no way of knowing. We have no telling for that. So, you know, it's just.
Well, I told you in the other day on the planning commission, I'm against it only because I think it's too much in that neighborhood. I think you need to build a bigger home.
Yes.
I don't think you need.
Well, you don't have the right to make them do that under the code. That's the thing is you don't, the planning commission, City Money, it's not having in their code the ability to say. Your R one says eight hundred square feet is the minimum. We can come in there right now and do this hundred and two lots and we can build eight hundred square foot homes.
On ten thousand square foot is the minimum size of a lot.
Every lot only is four hundred acres.
If you're unsure, if you're on setic, it's twenty thousand, which is a half acre lot because those things, but we're not.
We won't be on setic. No matter what, we won't be on setic.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, but you just said the size of a lot and I'm just clarifying. According to code, we did discuss this today. But the question you're asking, as you're asking this council to reconsider the denial, which was to rezonate your property, correct?
Correct.
And from what are you asking specifically?
From R one to R two.
For what reason?
So that we can build six hundred square foot homes as opposed to eight hundred square foot homes.
Small house.
No, the small houses.
Yeah, I mean, there may be people that build houses bigger, but we're, that's not what we're here to control. We're here to control the smallest size that's going to be allowed in this development that's going to happen. So. You know, that's, that's the fact is it's going to be, there's going to be a plat that's going to be presented in a couple of months. That'll have all your water and sewer questions answered and, and some other things, but it, you know, it's going to be, it's going to happen. It's just, do you want to allow? It's just, do you want to allow six hundred foot homes, or, or you want to make it eight hundred foot homes? You want a hun, you know, you want a total investment of, for somebody to be able to buy a home there that maybe lives here in Montegoal, would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or you want it to be two hundred thousand dollars?
Mayor Minsky?
Yeah, I mean...
So, here, here's the issue that, that I think I see, and I, and I think the, the rest of the council and, and the planning commission felt the same way. They were concerned that there was too many homes on this parcel of property. So my proposal would be that the city council, um, quickly increase the minimum lot size in R1 from ten to twenty thousand square feet. With this property in R1 zoning, then that would reduce the number of allowable lots within this, and, and all future developments within R1, because I think that's pretty typical, and then that gives the developer the opportunity to say, we would like to do smaller homes. We recognize that right now this is currently zoned R1, and if you would give us R2 to allow us to do smaller homes, we will do fewer lots, I mean, that, that...
The city attorney didn't hear, but I'm, I'm not so sure that now that we had to put it on, put this on, on the order to change the ordinance.
You don't have it on the agenda at all, we don't have it on our planning commission agenda, to, to the plaque for us.
We, we have to wait and go through a process to change it, because I thought the council that today, it's going to be a process to follow, if we do that, whenever you tell me to do it, so we can't do it as quickly as we want.
We can't do it right now, I don't need it tonight, but...
So, but back to...
I, I, I mean, I agree that six hundred square foot homes are where the market is, and I, I, I don't have a problem with that, I just have a problem with a number of lots. And, and I recognize that that is a separate issue, and it's, and that's, it's also not, you know, it's not, it's not a zoning issue at this point. I mean, it is, but your ordinance allows for that, you know, for the ten thousand square feet, as long as you've got sewer and water, and we are, that plan meets that code. We don't, we don't want, I mean, we think we've got the right, the right mix of lots, we think we've got the right size of lots for the, the, for, you know, if you think about putting a three thousand square foot home on, on a quarter or a third acre lot, it may not seem like a lot of land, but when you're only putting six hundred square feet in the middle of ten thousand square feet, that's a lot of land. Um, you know, there's a lot of space between that, um. You know, we've taken a lot of the land and, and put it into, we've got that fifty foot buffer, I mean, that's five times the buffer that you require between commercial and residential, and we've done it between residential and residential, around, around the entire property. You're not even going to see this thing with the fifty feet.
Well, I'm going to stand behind that decision, planning commission, I think it still needs to stay R2, or R1.
What was it, what is it, he's asked, or it's still... Jessica?
I'm not in favor of making the house smaller than it is, but, and we're not trying to stop growth, and we are trying to work with you, and we're trying to work with everyone here, but it's their job to protect the town money on the residency. We have done that, we've done that, even though we've been taking it forward, we've done that, and we will continue to do it, I think, as a council. So, and that's the reason I'm asking, and you said you're going to do the traffic study anyhow, bring us back the traffic study, show us you have access to Dixie Highway or forty-one, whatever you want to call it, because you've got to do it anyhow, and then look at the size of the development, because I'm in agreement, it's, and I don't know, I can't answer the question, but all I have it answered tomorrow.
Once you, once you reject it, we can't come back for a year, so, we'll be...
Well, if we table it, if we were, if they were to decide to table it, then you could come back, so that's, that's, without you brought it before us, so it could be tabled until we come back with the information that we need with certain...
I'm not sure, I think the planning, I'm not, I'd like to reread the ordinance, it's maybe worded that it is, yeah, okay.
I think tabled, well, that means we're not taking any action, I mean, if this council sees the will to, to do that until we...
And I'd make that motion to table it, to table it without any more information, I don't want to kill anyone, we don't want to be out there another year.
I'll second the motion to table.
Do you recall that, Nick?
Yes.
How many?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Dora?
I would, I would, not, I guess, Sarah?
Okay, now we're just citizens here, um, do you want to come up, please, sir, Grant?
All right, so I skipped Alden, didn't you?
Oh, did I, well, we'll come back to him, John can have the very end and then do it another way.
I never had anything actually to say, and I had something.
You always have something to say. Craig, come on out.
I mean, I was hoping he could hear, I'll, I'll speak loud enough, I was hoping he could hear this too, it's, um, and for your sake as well, I mean, this is, it seems like the zoning request changes right now are a little bit preliminary, premature, because we still need the sewer study, we still need the water study, we still need some of the traffic studies before we can even decide what type of development is going to come up, so, tabling it, or denying it, or whatever, whatever the process, seems like the right move, because it's, we're, it's jumping ahead, changing the zoning is jumping ahead before you get the other information, because then all of a sudden, you just be changing something from an R1 to an R2, potentially for no reason at all, um, and when the sewer study comes back and says, well, they, they have no sewer capacity. If we have no sewer capacity for them, that completely changes their development, they can check, say all day long, they'll put their own on there, which is fine, but it takes up a lot of space, and the buffers around it and all, so I just, I want to thank you for that. It's a little bit easier to, or get the guy's argument that, you know, we improved theirs and not his, going from industrial to residential is completely different than residential to residential.
Yes.
And I'm glad that you guys have done that, and I would continue, I'd ask you to continue thinking through this in terms of, is it too early to make, to make a residential change, or a zoning change, whether it's residential or commercial, something like that, before we have all the other answers to know whether a development can even come in or not, so I, I appreciate that, I just want to continue, I was hoping that he could hear this too, because I think that is something that's important for the future. Mayor couldn't agree with you more about going ahead and changing R1, there may be legal implications about whether it affects this group or not, but changing R1 should be a priority for this community, because R1 at eight hundred and small lots that they are is, is, is not, we need to safeguard this community a little bit better than, than that, so I hope you guys can, can move forward on, on that, but thank you.
Well, since he mentioned that, I know that that was, that's been in the zoning, wherever, do you know why that was? Is that just a standard that was used in their template, why was those two sizes identified that way?
It, it's just been carried up year after year after year after year.
So now's the time, nature correct, and Sam did say that we can change that, but it will not affect this issue.
Would you, would affect these guys?
No, because they brought it before us, but it is something we talked about that ordinance can be changed to.
And I, and I, and I, well, and I try to stay out of, uh, too much input from a peanut counter back here, but, uh, I'm not really sure, you're the body, they need to be appealing to, the planning commission is the people that you've been recommending to this council, what, what happens. I don't think you have a, I mean, I, maybe you do, I don't think you've got a document that's filed with the planning commission, running, running to that.
Well, I think that Donnie did tell us today, because she did check for Sam, that because they had denied the recommendation that he could have afforded council was the process, would you confirm that?
It might, it might be, that might be different.
But, well, it's welcome. Yeah, but we do need to do it, and Sam said, well, it doesn't affect the one that's been presented to us now, because it's, but then you are right, and that's another thing that, that's like a couple other ones we checked on today, that's it.
I'd like to make one comment about the gentleman.
Well, you can, if you have a minute, come up to the podium, and we'll let you, and then we'll come back to Alden, okay?
Yeah, I, I don't want to take it on my show, I, I think that what people are missing is, these two projects are night and day. I mean, there is clearly no comparison whatsoever, and with all due respect to the last gentleman, there's a process we all go through, and from a developer's standpoint, the gentleman just came on and spoke, development is, is a time of. If we don't get some preliminary set, then we have to go on to other projects. So it is important that we get a feeling from the city council that they would like to see this project move forward, because if not, we've got to go find other property, we can't just spend month after month after month chasing something that's not going to happen. So the other aspect is that there is a process, and if we get to, on, on our resort development, if we get to the point with the planning and, uh, and, and the building departments, and all the departments will say and have a say in whether this project is going to go this way, or this way, or this way, we're prepared to make adjustments. I mean, if we have to put setic, we'll be doing that, if we have to put a joint-type system, we will do that. We have more flexibility than someone trying to build, uh, a hundred and two houses on an intersection that him saying that he has a right, that we're going to do that, he's, he's wrong, he doesn't have a right. It's the count, it, it is your committees and your departments that will make that decision, and they may say, we're not going to give you access, you can build three houses on your R1 zoning, you're not going to build a hundred and two. So it's ludicrous to, for people to compare a resort-type development that brings revenue to the city to something that's a, I don't know, if we're going to sell it to permanent residents, or they're going to rent them, whatever, but...
Their HOA would have control over that, to say, we don't have, we don't have control of who's going to buy them, our development, we do have control, because we have, we have a governing HOA combined there, so...
So, I, I'm not going to dwell on this, but it's, I think the city council made a...
You're about three minutes, so, you're a citizen, Donnie, what is it about? We're doing the three-minute thing tonight, not the big one, because a lot of people...
Everyone take a couple of minutes, yeah, what I've got, I come and picked up a couple of applications, of forms, they had a new ordinance officer, and of course, I didn't want to fail out of form, right, you know, here, all that is, you know, you've got four people sitting up there, somebody should have the, the coons that, you know, that do the job. But I've got a couple of squashes that I want to get, you know, see if I can get cleaned up, one of them is the corner of Winston and Church Street. We've got a stop sign that's turned backwards, we've got a sign that says, uh, children at play, uh, neighborhood watch, we don't have a neighborhood watch that sign, as far as I'm aware, it could come down, it's, it's on the, at the corner, we're richer back there, he got, you know, he got a place of business there, and it just looks ugly, and when you come up there, you folks go to church up there, you know what I'm talking about, right there on the corner, it's just a nuisance. And then the house, I think it's at two oh five Winston Avenue, that house was coming there, and they condemned that house about two years ago, and I think someone had, may have had a conversation with you about that same house.
I hadn't been here two years.
A couple of months ago.
Which...
If they had the little green house at Long Bobby's, that thing got condemned when John Knotts was the ordinance officer for the town money.
No, I just talked to me about it.
But anyway, you know, something we could be done with, they just, and now since you've got pigs coming here now, everybody's, you know, pushing this shit and all, and all these drugs, and all they're doing is using these houses for drug houses.
Okay, but, so, make sure you got the low crashes, because nobody's talked to me about a field, but...
Someone told me they talked about the house.
Yeah, but they have, they didn't give me a specific location, one you've just given us. Any other signs on Winston Street that would be...
The signs, they're right there at the intersection of Winston and Church Street, uh, they just look pathetic looking, and then the other one, I went down South Central Street, or South Central Avenue, and that little house over March Guest used to live, I didn't see it on that.
Yes, yep.
I mean, it's, that house is, I mean, that is really truly, that's what you say you need to clean your own backyard up, because, I mean, it's, it's pathetic looking, it's dangerous, and no one's lived in that house in probably forty, maybe fifty years, and it's just sitting there, it, you know, it's, it's a nuisance for the town.
When the city had checked on the burn, actually, they've talked to Travis about getting control burn, and I'm not sure they can, so we're going to have to hire somebody to demo it, John just walked out.
Yeah, I was hoping John would beat through Travis because...
John and Travis both walked out, because I know that they said control burns could not be that close to, and they were going to...
Right.
That was just recently, and they got to bid out the demo on it, because it would be more than fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and there's another house at the end of South Central Avenue on the way, they were banning the house, it's where, it's where Walsh Law used to live, it's like a bandit, their house.
Who is it, man?
Uh, I don't know who, but they still own it, but anyway, it's, it's, it's a nuisance.
Okay, so, well, we'll just get them to drive us down, we've got a lot of attachments to them, because me...
But I lost the paper, you just signed, tell me, get on my box for that.
All right, we're good, so let's hurry to it, you're welcome. Anyone else? And the citizens? I thought that was Travis, I'm, I'm questioning why. No, but, we'll get Travis up to stand us, so I'll deal with it, because we got it identified, we don't have... Well, wait one second, sir, come on out, and then the council wants to talk, we're going to try, I'm sorry, they can't answer, but yes, you can address that, maybe with council.
Okay, I'm taking the wheelchair, I'm a moral like driver, um, before the meeting, I read the, what I think is going to be the governing document for this development behind McDonald's, and that thing says specifically that the homeowner will have the right to rent it, you could end up with, you know, forty Airbnbs and forty Reynolds and traffic problems that you really don't want to even think about, so, um, I'm glad you all have delayed this, and, um, I hope they will see the light of reduce the quantity of houses they're putting up, thanks.
Okay, any other citizens? No, Nick, you want to start?
Mine's easy, uh, Cub Scouts in Tracy City had a meeting on Tuesday, and we were trying to think of new fundraising ideas, and we thought that a car wash would be a pretty good one, that our Cub Scouts, who are mostly younger, could take on, and we were looking for a high-visibility location where we might be able to get some water, and we wondered if we could use City Hall at some point late summer, if we could use the parking lot to do a car wash fundraiser.
Can you get the date for us, so we can specifically do it?
Yeah, well, we would work with you all on the dates, we're just, so that we make sure we had something that works, we just, what it would cost the town is that we would need to use your water, and so that's the question.
We would probably have to do a waiver, because of, with the Cub Scouts, so there's no liability if anyone ever to get hurt, and we probably have to do that.
Yeah, and it would be, it would be a sanction to bend through the Boy Scouts of America, so their insurance would cover it as well, we'd be happy to do that, but the question is, would you all be okay with it, and then we can discuss dates, if it's something you all want to do.
If the council is agreeable with it, I think it's a good idea to work with the kids, because they want to work, the, the job, have to make a motion and approve it with a waiver, with a Boy Scout, so we were there, so, we're going to do it.
Sometime late summer, we'll work, we'll work with the town to make sure that it's something that's doable.
Let's, uh, let's do, approve this in case we have other groups and organizations and schools that want to do stuff, so we have a process in which we handle these, okay? Because I know you're involved with the Cub, but you might want to disclose that you...
I'm the den master of the Tracy City Cub Scouts, in full disclosure.
Yeah, I'm just saying, and you also have kids that are in acceptance.
I will get wet feet from this activity, if it's a...
So you will be washing cars.
And propagating clean hands, sir.
No, it's just...
So, do we have a motion to approve the Cub Scouts using one day for a car wash down hall?
Yes, does anyone have a question?
Yes.
I have thirty seconds left, huh? What about the flower poles through town?
Uh, those, those were removed, because we had donations of Mountain Laurel that were put in there, and the council accepted, so removing those, so now we have Mountain Laurel, that's now growing, we have to replace it every year, which says...
Someone asked me about what happened.
Oh, no, we still got them, they got them at the shop, if you want to know, so we can utilize them in other areas at times, we didn't deal away with them. If you know where they at, they're at the city shop.
Okay, thank you. Craig Marlowe was lower maintenance.
And also, we don't replace it every year, so that saved a lot of money, and they were all donated too, those were donated, just numbers and examples, so... Back to, do we have a motion to approve for a one-day car wash for the, is it Cub Scouts?
It's Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, so it's Boy Scout troop twelve and Cub Scout troop, or pack thirty-two.
And that will be coordinated at a certain time with the town, for records. I'll have some on sheet for it, okay? Do you have a sec?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion, all in favor?
I'm...
I guess I'll understand.
No.
Again, if you probably did, did my question, my answer, I did.
Yeah, so anyway, but it's just, Alvin, do you have anything?
Who?
Jessica?
Yeah.
Dora?
Uh, Tony, an answer to your question, I didn't know that I had to do anything, you said we had four up here, we think somebody had enough gonads to do something, I didn't realize that I couldn't do anything except turn them to the codes of torture, but he will be notified.
Well, I want you to sign that thing, and I don't care if you might know who it is, it tells, you know?
I know, I know.
I mean, you got an ordinance officer, and he sees something, I was watching, I told this officer, he sees a car, and if I see a car, it's going to be a town, and it's seventy-five miles an hour, I don't need to run up and fill out a form to tell him, man, I saw that car.
I know, and a lot of people don't want to put their name on that title.
I, I know, but I can, I'm just...
I get it.
We're talking about wanting to beautify our town, well, if we want to beautify our town, let's clean it up.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot.
And those houses are just sitting there, those two houses, I don't... And those houses have been sitting there, those two houses, I know, the one next to me, they haven't lived in it, and I know for like fourteen years, the power company pulled the power from it, the house was condemned.
I've got, I've got three on my street.
And the yards look pathetic, you know, the, the guy passed away, but, you know, I mean, I hate it because the man died, but I mean, you know, we've got to clean the yard up.
Yeah, I believe you.
In ten years, I'll have a hundred and two on our street.
But the other thing, uh, is, is that. But you get them cheap. Travis is also the fire chief, he's full-time, he just took this position. He's working with Earl to make sure he doesn't create a liability for the town. So, and I do, and with forms, here's what happens. People complain, I'm picking on them, she's picking on them, they're picking on them. We don't go advertise, he does the forms, they are public record, but that way, we have a paper trail that I'm just not pointing at you, or somebody else is not pointing it out. And there's a process that we have to follow. So, that's the reason we ask people to follow the forms. I mean, hopefully, there'll be at a point that he'll have the extra time, so he tells him fires, he has what he's been trying to do with the fire department, so his time's split, so it's not like he's just not sitting around, not trying to do his job.
Oh, yeah, I think he's good on himself.
So, but that's what I'm saying, so, two things. And anybody's done us anything, we've addressed it, and if we could. I know, they may have mentioned something, but they didn't have any specific locations, and it was in passing, so I apologize, I'm human. I forget, and now we've got it, we'll go with it, so.
And if anybody's got a complaint, I mean, and you don't wanna put your name down, come to any of us. You know, and I'm like a complaint, I'll put my name on it, you know.
We've done that before. We got to, because people said I didn't want to, so we would have them go check it, and one of us, one of the workers, the boys have done. So.
I mean, I get it, nobody needs to put their name on there.
Is there anything else, Alvin?
Well, Travis just texted, he gave us that quote for, because they've raised so much attack hose, and we failed to approve the money to let him get new attack hose. He says he thinks it's in the budget, but because it's more than twenty-five hundred, I think we have to approve it, don't we?
So, but do we, do we need to go ahead and approve that? Because he says right now, three hundred feet of it has.
That's, that's.
So, do we need to wait and do, and just test all of it?
So, we can do it all?
What he said was, he said fifty-fifty, so, he's talking about twelve units of fifty. You're right, that's more than, that's his estimation. So, now, he said all the.
Did you say I was right?
He said, he said, he needs the attack hose now, and he says he has it in his budget, and what I'm trying to figure out is how much of this attack hose, whether it hits the threshold or not.
It's.
But if he left without it, let's.
Yeah, let's, let's, we will, um.
I just don't wanna leave him without hose.
How much is it?
Well, so, he's got fifty feet, twelve units, twelve fifty-foot sections, for thirty-six hundred, and three twenty-five foot sections for seven hundred. The seven hundred he can do on his own.
Right, the thirty-six hundred, can we make a motion to approve it if it doesn't exceed the thirty-six hundred if it's in his budget?
Well, let me, let me.
He said it was, he said it's in his budget. So, I'll look and see, make sure that it pulled up there, or not.
Just gonna pull the budget back.
I want you to, do you have something to say? All right, Debbie?
I want you to explain that budget, man, one to you.
Okay.
There's seventy-one thousand, it's worth, it went over budget.
Right, yeah.
The reason that's not used is, it's not worth taking. It comes out of cash flow.
Right, exactly.
That's why the, it gets a fat.
Go to the other side of the sheet, you identified that, it was, yeah, it's the, um, if you look on your second sheet, it tells what. You need to write that in.
It needs, it's in the budget.
I'll check, I'll check the budget.
Wait one second, she's screaming to y'all, you don't care.
It's for lawnmower, for paving of the roads, for program equipment, um, drill cars, salaries, electricity, hurricane, supplies, building insurance, uh.
Now, with seventy-seven for lawnmower, you know, if I.
If we get a lawnmower?
Now, because they had to work it.
Yeah.
I think they had to order a new one, they said.
But, 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 those couple of budgets, man.
Okay, let's make the motion.
Yeah, he's got, he does, he's got, he's got ten more work in repairs.
So, then let's make a motion, Tracy City, with.
Thirty, thirty-six hundred plus six ninety is forty-two ninety, correct?
Forty-two ninety-four, let's say forty-three. Forty-three.
Make a motion to approve forty-three hundred dollars for the fire department to replace hoses.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, do they have? Do I have to hit what? Well, we can approve them out with, based upon the quotes he receives.
And then you'll have to get, you'll have to get free throw, folks, to make a purchase.
Well, we could budget hose money and not, but it can't expand until we get the quotes, then. Okay.
Is it five thousand for the quote?
Twenty-five hundred.
All right, well, if we got it, uh, the amount, we can still get the quotes.
Okay, so, you're gonna do forty-three hundred for hoses. Not to exceed forty-three hundred, it's, uh, once it gets the quotes, if it exceeds that, then it has to come back.
And my motion, my motion will be subject to the money go purchase, uh, purchasing requirements.
Policy, the policy, the policy.
Yeah.
So, okay, you're from circle. Who's gonna start coming?
I'll start.
Second. All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed?
Now it's your turn.
I have nothing else to say.
Do you want to, Jack?
Yes.